Feedback I've got is very positive, so I feel very confident in our abilities to get this additional funding. And if something were to occur, we could always scale back and look at what we're actually doing. But I think the size and scope, to give you an idea, Parra Playground, the all abilities there is about 9,800 square feet, and it looks like we'd be just over that, about 10,000 square feet in layout at the Sparks Marina. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions or comments? Chris, does the 220,000 and the $80,000 donation get us there, or how short?
Mm-hmm. I believe right there with what's included in our CIP at 550, that puts us right in the mark where we need to be.
Okay. So we do have 550 allocated?
Yes, sir. In our CIP allocated from the city through the CIP process.
Okay. Super. Mr. Anderson?
Just want to compliment you, Chris, and likewise the whole department for working on this. Tens of thousands of people enjoy the Marina, and as Mr. Dare said, it is the gem of the city, and what a great way to add to it by making this all abilities playground available for them. So, thank you for what you guys have done. Likewise, the work that you've gone in, looking at what's working well, what's not working so well, and tailoring this to be the best program. And then to have groups like Rotary come together to help this come to be is awesome. So, thank you for your work.
I appreciate it. You know, I feel very fortunate. This will be the second opportunity I have to build one of these. I've had some great opportunities to build some really exciting projects here at the city, but, you know, this and Parra are probably the two most important that I'll ever be involved with here at the city.
Parra's been pretty darn successful.
Extremely successful.
Yes.
And knowing what goes on at the Marina, what's occurring at the Marina, what we're seeing with the growth, the access it provides to everybody in the region, this is a needed project. And it's not only going to be for Sparks, for the entire region. So, I can't thank you guys and our leadership enough for the opportunity to be a part of it again.
Mr. Dare?
I just want to know, when it comes to raising the 220,000 grant, I know I've heard a little bit about some of the grants. Does this open, what if there's another group like Lions Club, or someone out there who wants to help? Or, who knows? Is there a way that you're opening those doors? Is there something, a way that we can be helpful, and just if people ask us, or any of that information?
If there was somebody that would contact one of the council, absolutely. If you could put them in direct contact with our Parks and Rec Director, Tracy Dominguez, or myself. I have a list of foundations that we've been very successful with through the Recreation Program, and some of our adaptable programs. There's also a great program at the state, the Land Water Conservation Fund, so that we've got some great opportunities here. And like I said, I've reached out to a few just to inquire what we're doing there totally fits what they look to fund, and they're looking forward to us being a part of that process if I'm authorized tonight. Very cool.
Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to encourage you to reach back out to the Rotarians. There's a couple of them there in the city. They sit on foundation boards that might give a donation there, too. So, reach back out to Mike Day and Don Welsh, because he might put you in contact with the right guy who says, "Here, here's a big check for you."
I will be pounding the pavement in every direction, gentlemen. I will not let this fail.
Chris, so, once we get all the money and the, assuming we have it and the permitting, when can we start building this thing?
You know, the money will be a big determining factor. I think if we were on the worst-case scenario, I know the state's process, if I was to get a bunch of funding and I had to, I think the one that's out there through the Land Water Conservation Fund, you do applications in the spring, and they do the award in the fall. Worst-case scenario, I think we'd be breaking ground probably this time next year.
Okay.
If not sooner.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions or comments? Okay, looking for motion. Mr. Anderson?
Move to authorize staff to seek additional grant funding from various foundations in the estimated amount of $220,000 to assist in the design and construction costs of Sparks Marina All Abilities Playground.
Okay, I have a motion looking for a second. Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Chris. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.5 is Brian. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of reconstruction contract AC-5614 for the Golden Eagle Regional Park Synthetic Turf Replacement, Fields 10 through 15 infields.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the City Council. For the record, my name's Brian Kason, Capital Projects Manager for the City of Sparks. And of course, I've got Chris Cobb here, the Parks Development Coordinator, sitting next to me. Ultimately, we've got this project for Fields 10 through 15 for replacing the infields out of Golden Eagle Regional Park. These circles show basically the location of where the fields are going to be replaced. Back in February of this year, as you might recall, we had an agenda item come before you that where we rejected bids for Fields 10 through 15, which is just the pinwheel part of it. In this project, we added one more field. With that one, we only received one bid. It was over budget. So ultimately, Chris has done a fantastic job over the last few months, working with the turf manufacturers, along with our consultant, to try and come up with a better plan going forward. So, three items that rose to the top were, first of all, the field access. And whenever we did the multi-use fields, seven and eight, you have to access the fields over the grass, and that causes damage to the grass. So, to minimize damage and to minimize costs in that respect, Chris went out and got a contractor to install turf stone pavers, which are an open-cell paver that allow grass to grow up between the pavers, and allow us to not have to move any sprinkler systems, but still maintain access to the fields, not only for this project, but for future maintenance of the fields. Secondly, was working with the turf manufacturers to provide a specification that allows more competition for the bid. Basically going through, and we want to ensure we have good quality fields that last a long time, and hold up to the use that occurs out there, but working with them to try and open up the competition a little bit. And then lastly, is the mobilization cost. The previous bid, we were trying to minimize downtime, but in the end, it was just being cost prohibitive. We were going to have them just close down one to two fields at a time throughout the process, and get those completed in their entirety. This one, we're going to allow them, if approved, to start construction November 25th, and we're going to close down all six fields for a short amount of time, to allow them to go in and remove the turf on the infields, and prepare the surface. And then, as of January 10th, we have them having at least one field completed, and with the turf installed, and then releasing that back to the Parks Department. And then after that, in two-week increments, doing the same thing with the rest of the fields, and with the anticipated completion date of March 20th. So, in the end, we did end up getting four bids in this particular bidding process, and we got a cost that was below budget. And by doing that, we also added one field. So, we're below budget, and we added an additional field from what we had previously. So, FieldTurfUSA was the lowest responsive bidder. Their bid was $688,737.12, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is that the group that did the last field?
No, they did the original. So, I feel pretty excited that we're teaming up with FieldTurf again. They got a really neat product that they've developed specifically for baseball and softball.
Okay.
As well as they're teamed up, one of their subcontractors is Q&amp;D. Who built Golden Eagle originally.
Okay. Excuse me. Questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, I'm glad you made that motion, and, you know, playing a little softball. I've got a kickball game out there tonight, so you'll be thrilled to hear this. So, I move to approve a construction contract AC-5614 for the Golden Eagle Regional Park Synthetic Turf Replacement, Fields 10 through 15 infields project to FieldTurfUSA, Inc., in the amount of $688,737.12.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second. Mr. Dare?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job. 9.6, Mindy. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval to participate in an agreement AC-5618 negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with Maxxer Plus Limited to administer the pharmacy benefit for the City of Sparks.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Mindy Falk, Human Resources Director. For your consideration today is a new participation agreement for a new pharmacy benefit administrator. The city has a self-funded group plan, which means that the city pays the first $300,000 of any insurance claim. And to do that, we need contracts with providers. And the city groups up with Nevada Business Group on Health, and that is a group of public and private employers who get together to get insurance contracts. And we do this because you get a cheaper cost for more lives. So, the city's current vendors for pharmacy are WellDyne, which is our current pharmacy benefit administrator, which are the people who answer the phones and pay the claims, True Choice, which is the network, and then Gateway, and they are the rebate aggregator. And the rebate aggregator is what you would think, that just like when you buy a toaster, and you put in a coupon to the manufacturer, and you get 20 bucks back, that's how it works for pharmacy as well. So, all of these contracts expire on December 31st of this year. There was a contracting committee from Nevada Business Group on Health, which I was a member of, and we did an RFP. We had eight responses, and four groups who did presentations. Maxxer was chosen as the pharmacy benefit administrator for a couple different reasons. One, many of the groups were having customer service issues with WellDyne. The other is it presented a better value. The pricing was better than the WellDyne current contract, as well as it had enhanced technology for our members and for the city's staff. The decision was made to keep True Choice and Gateway the same, because they were performing as expected or even better. The cost of this is a little complicated, because claims utilization is how you figure out costs in insurance claims, and that is the number of claims you have in any given year, plus the cost per claim. And all those things generally and will change from year to year. But we did have a consultant do a cost analysis and use 12 weeks of data. If the city had the exact same claims utilization, it would be a 23% decrease in cost. Now, that is really unlikely that we'd have the exact same claims history from year to year, so the actual cost is going to vary. What does this mean for our employees? The employees will not have to change pharmacies. They'll be able to use the same one they use now. There's still 24/7 customer support. And then anybody who has some disruption from this change, HR and Maxxer is going to reach out to them and help minimize that as much as possible. So, with that, I can answer any questions.
Okay, questions or comments? Mr. Anderson?
So, Mindy, when the group gets together to make these decisions, and try and figure out which direction we're going to go, do you also look at nationwide groups that join together, or even state purchasing, things like that? Is that something that you guys consider?
We don't consider state, this is sort of a state purchasing group, get that out, in a way that the City of Reno is on it, Wash County is part of this group, Douglas County School District, and then a number of private employers. So, we didn't look at the state's contracts necessarily, but we did look at national providers as well, and this was the best option for the groups.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dare?
I know you said you'd work with anybody who's kind of finding themselves in a difficult place, but we know we probably have a few that are difficult to begin with, just because depending on people's health, it's all very personal very much. Have you been able to, I just, I imagine we say yes to this, or whatever, we move forward, and all of a sudden, you have a line of a few people. Are they aware of any that's going on? Have we looked at some of the problems that are going to be caused, and how to mitigate that? Just because it's so personal to people, one day is going to make a huge difference, one week if it takes that to get them on right. It's just a very big deal to shift for some of them, because I've seen some of the pharmacy go from one cost to a crazy amount, depending on the provider.
So, we have not individually reached out yet. Part of it is, to do that, we have to sign the agreement and have confidential agreements, so we need your approval to do that. But once we have that, we are going to do that. And we agree that working with people as soon as possible, especially, there are many people on medications that can't have interruptions. So, that is definitely our number-one goal, is to work on those first.
And if this is approved today, does this start immediately? Is this like a three-month window? Does it give us time to ramp in, ramp out?
It's January 1st.
It's January.
So, we'll be with WellDyne until December. So, we have some time to work through the transition.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
Move to approve participation agreement AC-5618 with Maxxer Plus Limited, and authorize the city manager to execute the participation agreement for this service.
Okay, I have a motion looking for a second. Mr. Lawson? Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Mindy. Okay, 9.7, Lisa. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval to join an existing City of Reno agreement AC-5613 with NCR Payment Solutions.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Lisa Hunterman, your city clerk, for the record. I am here today presenting two separate agenda items that are very closely related in terms of the way the City of Sparks handles debit card, credit card, and e-check payment processing within the Customer Service Division. My first item is my recommendation that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with NCR Payment Solutions for all of our payment processing for debit card, credit card, and e-check transactions. We would be utilizing a jointer provision with this agreement, joining onto an existing City of Reno contract. Currently, the City of Sparks contracts with two separate payment providers for credit card, debit card, and e-check processing. The first provider handles all of our customer service counter-related functions, sewer payments, business licensing, building permits. And the second provider handles our online transactions through our Acela regional portal for business licensing and building permits. Both contracts for these providers expire October 31st. Anytime that the city accepts a payment for a credit card, debit card, or e-check payment, it costs the city a fee. Those fees add up, and over the last 12 months, the City of Sparks has paid roughly $209,000 in processing fees within the Customer Service Division alone. I did an analysis of the same time period, same 12 months' worth of payments with the proposed provider, and we would have shown a savings of roughly $35,000, or 16.7%. I do expect that the city will continue to pay an increasing amount of fees for processing credit card, debit card, and e-check payments. However, the rate that NCR is able to provide us is 2% plus 25 cents per transaction for credit card and debit cards, and a flat 50 cent per transaction rate for e-check payments, which is lower overall than what we were paying before. So, we will continue to see a savings in the amount that we pay, even if we're paying a little bit more over time. NCR will also provide us with up-to-date equipment that is fully modernized to accept Apple Pay, Android Pay, Tap to Pay, and chip payments, which has actually been requested quite often from not only our customers, but our council members. Again, it is my recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with NCR Payment Solutions, and that concludes my presentation on this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You're not going to answer any questions?
I said, "I'm happy." I'm not going to.
Mr. Abbott?
I was just more of a comment. No, I'm definitely thrilled that we have Apple Pay and Android. Like, I only carry one credit card anymore, because I live on, I carry my, like, virtual wallet as my millennial self, and it's awesome. It's just, a lot of my friends are in the same boat anymore, and so I think it's, looking forward. And my question on the Apple Pay and Android, is that still the same 2%?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve joining the existing contract AC-5613 between the City of Reno and NCR Payment Solutions FL LLC for the provision of payment processing services at a rate of 25 cents per credit or debit card transaction, plus 2% of the total transaction amount, and a rate of 50 cents per e-check transaction, authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second. Mr. Anderson?
A second motion?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Oh, no. I can use my Apple Pay now.
Okay, passes.
You have an Android phone, so no.
You can use Android.
I'll use my Pineapple.
It passes unanimously.
You're losing control, sir.
I know. Passing unanimously. 9.9, this is you again. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of our three-year contract AC-5611 with Gray Quarter Incorporated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Lisa Hunterman, your city clerk, for the record. As we just discussed the processing of payments, now what I would like to do is discuss with you how those payments integrate and translate over into Acela, which is our regional business license and permitting platform. To give you a little bit of a background, when a payment is made, it goes through the payment processor, and that payment processor manages the transaction between the merchant, which is the City of Sparks, and the financial institution, which would be Visa, MasterCard, Discover Card. What that payment processor does not do is communicate directly or interact directly within the Acela regional platform. This lack of communication, per se, has caused roughly 16 to 20 hours of staff time spent weekly reconciling payments made from our Acela online access into the customer accounts. Resolving payment issues, incomplete payments that may come in, a lot of time has been spent trying to rectify these instances. Now, as a regional approach, Washo County issued a request for proposal on behalf of the region, looking for a full solution payment processor who was able to actually process the payment and integrate directly within Acela, and they found there was none to be had. Gray Quarter Incorporated submitted a separate proposal to the region as a standalone software solution that promised to resolve payment errors regardless of what the payment processor, which payment processor was being used. The regional partners did a demonstration with Gray Quarter and found that Gray Quarter basically would be the manager of the transaction between the payment processor and Acela itself. Gray Quarter is also an Acela preferred provider, and they have worked with Acela in managing those transactions before. The Acela Regional Coordinating Committee agrees and recommends that each agency that is currently within the regional platform contract out with Gray Quarter. The fees for the City of Sparks for a three-year contract with Gray Quarter is a one-time fee of $3,750 for setup and implementation, and then a $9,338 fee on an annual basis, for a total of $31,764 over the term of three years. Adding Gray Quarter will improve staff efficiency, I'm sorry, improve staff efficiency will allow us to have better reporting of incoming payments into our Acela platform, will provide a more user-friendly payment experience for the customers, a highly customizable shopping cart integration within Acela, and allow each agency within the regional platform to choose their own payment provider. It is my recommendation that the City Council approve the three-year contract with Gray Quarter Incorporated in the amount of $31,764 to provide integration between the payment processor and Acela. We feel that using Gray Quarter to do the integration of the payment processing is something that's just been missing within our setup, and a long time coming. With that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, looking, any questions? Mr. Dare?
So, just putting together what we just did in this, it would seem that we still have a small savings on all of our transactions when it's said and done, and then we'll have a bigger savings when it just comes to our staff. It's what we're kind of, if you just throw it all in barrel, right?
Absolutely.
And then I'd also say that, looking at this, this is nothing to do with how much comes through. This is a flat fee. So, there's, we could have millions come through or not, but we're going to be paying that 9,000 that they're talking about here.
Correct. It is a $9,000 fee on an annual basis, regardless of the number of transactions that are done.
Gotcha. And, okay, very good. I'm ready to make a motion when you need to, sir.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion, Mr. Dare?
I move to approve a three-year contract AC-5611 with Gray Quarter Incorporated to provide interface development, implementation, and maintenance of integration services between the payment processor and Acela, citizen access, in an amount not to exceed $31,764. Good job.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second. Mr. Anderson?
A second motion?
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Lisa.
You guys.
Okay, move on to 9.9. Danny's not here, so, who's doing that? Armando. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to direct the city manager to initiate changes to Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to permit tattoo parlors in additional zoning districts. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, members of the City Council. I am Armando Anelis, the Assistant Community Services Director. Per request from Councilman Abbott on August 12th, this agenda item is intended to provide the City Council the opportunity to direct staff to initiate the preparation of amendments to the zoning code to allow tattoo parlors in additional zoning districts. This map on the screen in the green shows the three zoning districts where tattoo parlors are currently permitted. They are the mixed-use commercial, the C2 or general commercial, and the tourist commercial districts. In general, they are located on the west end of the city, along Prater and McCarran, and then in a few select spots further north. Prior to adoption of the 2015 zoning code, tattoo parlors were not categorized as a separate use, but rather were included in the personal services use category. And personal services today are allowed in addition to these three zoning districts and five additional zoning districts. They are the professional office, which is in the blue, portions of the industrial area, the mixed-use, mixed-residential district, the mixed-use downtown Victorian Square district, and industrial. So, in terms of options, the city has numerous options with regard to where to allow tattoo parlors in additional districts if the council is so inclined. They could be added in potentially all five of these additional zoning districts, or just some of them. Another consideration is whether to add some use criteria, for example, with regard to hours of operation, or possibly a conditional use permit process requirement if they are to go into additional zoning districts. Today, staff is simply asking for direction to proceed with the code amendments, and if given that direction, then we will bring you back recommendations at a future council meeting. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions or comments? No, I would just ask, I don't see why we don't make everything just the personal services zoning. And that's for me, and I don't vote, but that's my, that's my personal opinion. Mr. Dare?
One thought I did have, depending on where it's at, I do think it's something we want to look at, the timing of these, because I've seen, in some areas, when there are 24 hours, that definitely does change. That, depending on the zone it's in, it'd probably be good for us to have a look at it, would be my thought, that it comes back. So, there's some use language in there of some sort, getting approved, and not just an automatic, so we're putting some, saying yes to something now, that we're going, "Oh, no, we said yes to something we don't want over there." So, and it's not just, I want to say this, it's not that we're saying a tattoo parlor, no, we're saying the timing of it, maybe not a 24-hour, or what, you know, because some of them have done that. I've seen that in other places.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you for looking into this. I think this is something that was definitely needing a change in our city. I personally agree with what the mayor said, as far as it falling under personal services with a caveat of hours of operation, because I do think that's about the only thing that could cause an issue if they're open at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, potentially next to a residence or something. But that's the direction I'd like to see. Thank you.
Mr. Abbott?
I'll make a comment, and then I can make a motion, but I think it's just like a beauty salon. It's pretty similar. People come up, they take out the services behind the door. You know, I don't have any tattoos, but it's a fairly common thing anymore for tattoo shops. So, I'm ready to make a motion, if anyone else.
Well, one more comment for me. You know, even beauty salons, they're under personal services, they, a lot of those people who work in the salons are private contractors, so they make their appointments sometime. They're there at 10:00 o'clock at night, and I don't see, I don't see them working till 2:00 in the morning, but, so just be careful when you limit the hours of operation. Okay, Mr. Abbott?
Yep. I move to direct the city manager to initiate changes to Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code by preparing code amendments permitting tattoo parlors in additional zoning districts.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second. Mr. Dare?
I'll second that with a quick comment.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Mr. Dare?
So, we can all get a big Sparks tattoo, I was thinking, together.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't have one?
So, I second that. That's all I have to say.
Okay, if we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Where would you put your tattoo?
I don't want to talk about that, sir.
I'm looking at the ant, he's going, "I'm not going to tattoo that." Okay, we have a motion to second, all in favor, or please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.10, first reading. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2766, an ordinance to rezone a site approximately 17,043 square feet in size located at 1620 Pyramid Way, Sparks, Nevada, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C2 General Commercial, PCN 19-0027.
Public hearing of this bill, Number 2766, will, well, this bill, for its consideration and possible approval, will be held at the regular city council meeting scheduled for Monday, October 28, 2018. Okay, we're going to move on to public hearing items. 10.1, Allison, second reading, public hearing, discussion, and possible action on Bill Number 2765, an ordinance amending Chapter 5.28 of the Sparks Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mayor Smith and city council. For the record, I'm Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick. And I am very pleased to be here today to talk to you about the second reading and public hearing of Bill Number 2765, which would create two new alcoholic beverage license types. Those would be a growler license and a caterer's alcoholic beverage license. This bill came about because at the August 12th city council meeting, Councilman Abbott asked staff to look into allowing bars and pubs to fill growlers. And if you don't know what a growler is, Mr. Sando will pass one down the line right now. He's also passing, he's also passing down a...
Where's the straw? Paper.
The second item there, well, the first is a glass growler. Growlers are typically either glass or metal. The smaller item is what's called a crowler, which is a thirty-two ounce metal can that's filled with beer and then mechanically sealed. And then you can pop it open like a soda can. Unlike a soda can, though, it is meant for sharing. Looking, when staff looked into Councilman Abbott's request from that August 12th meeting, staff identified two holes in our current alcoholic beverage licensing scheme. One was that only manufacturers are permitted to fill growlers under our current code. And two is that licenses for alcoholic beverages are tied to a specific location, which makes it illegal for caterers operating at different locations in the city to serve alcohol along with the food that they're preparing and serving. This bill would fill both of those holes by creating these two new license types. Again, the first is a growler license, which would only be available to holders of on-premises or package licenses. It would allow holders of those license types to fill growlers and crowlers. No background check would be required to get a growler license because it's only available to entities that have already been licensed and gone through that background check process. Manufacturers would be exempt from this growler license requirement because they are already allowed to fill growlers and crowlers under our current code. The caterer's license would allow alcohol service in conjunction with food at catered events at different locations around the city. A background check would be required for a caterer's alcoholic beverage license unless the applicant already has a different kind of alcohol license. For example, if a restaurant also provides off-site catering services and has an alcoholic beverage license tied to the restaurant, a new background check would not be required for that caterer's license. Under both license types, bartenders would be required to get work permits, as with any other alcoholic beverage license in the city. Staff recommends that city council approve this bill, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, bring it back to council for action. Looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
Yes, gladly will make this motion. I move to approve Bill Number 2765, an ordinance amending Chapter 5.28 of the Sparks Municipal Code by adding provisions allowing some alcoholic beverage licenses to fill growlers and crowlers, allowing alcohol service by caterers and providing other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second. Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you, Allison, passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, 10.2, this is Kevin. Second reading, public hearing, discussion, and possible action on Bill Number 2764, amending Section 13.24.020 and 13.24.030 of the Sparks Municipal Code. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, Kevin Porter, utility manager. And that's a tough act to follow. I do not have a storm drain or sewer pipe to pass along the dais this afternoon. The bill before you with this, the second reading of this item, will amend Title 13 specifically the sections that address connection fees, both residential and commercial. For the background, if you will recall, in December of 2018, council approved rate increases to the connection fees, among other rates in Title 13. The rate increase that was approved was thirty percent, a flat rate. And that thirty percent rate was subsequently applied to our financial billing system. So, the connection fees that have been billed out since that rate increase approved went into effect on January 1st are the correct thirty percent. The fees that made it into our Title 13 code were slightly off on the connection fee. One was twenty-nine point five percent on the residential side, and actually thirty-two point one percent on the commercial side. What this bill will do, will amend those connection fees in Title 13. And we will be left with a clean thirty percent increase on connection fees in Title 13. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
Move to approve Bill Number 2764, amending Sections 13.24.020 and 13.24.030 of the Sparks Municipal Code.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Dare?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, 10.3, Allison. Consideration and possible approval of a five-year extension of the Sierra Pacific Power Company DBA Nevada Energy Natural Gas Franchise Agreement. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. Again, for the record, I'm Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick. If there aren't any objections, I'll address Item 10.3 regarding the natural gas franchise agreement and 10.4 regarding electric service together because they are very similar. But each item does require a separate public hearing and a separate motion.
Okay.
The city has franchise agreements with Sierra Pacific Power Company doing business as NV Energy for natural gas and electric service. Those agreements concern access to city right-of-way and other areas for NV Energy's infrastructure. The service itself that is provided by NV Energy is largely governed by the state through the Public Utilities Commission. The city collects five percent franchise fees under both agreements, which is the maximum allowed by state law. In fiscal year nineteen, that amounted to almost $5 million between the two agreements. $1.15 million under the natural gas agreement and $3.85 million under the electrical agreement. That money gets distributed to the road fund, the general fund, and the parks maintenance fund. These agreements require NV Energy to request an extension of the agreements at least two years before the agreement is set to expire. Both agreements are currently set to expire on April 23 of 2021. NV Energy timely requested an extension of both agreements. So, that's why we're here so far in advance is because the agreements require NV Energy to ask far in advance. If approved, the agreement's terms would be extended until April 23 of 2026. Staff recommends approval of both extensions to maintain natural gas and electrical service in the city, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Linda, did you want to say anything?
I sure do.
Come on down.
Mayor Smith, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, members of the council, Linda Viset, Government Affairs, Executive for NV Energy. I'll just introduce real quick a couple of their people with me from left to right. Chris Hoffman, our Director of Grid Operations and Reliability. We have Chief Mark Reagan, who is our Fire Mitigation Specialist, and Kristin Sabidi, who's in Corporate Communications. So, they're here to answer any questions. But I do want to thank the City Attorney's Office for working with us and bringing these before you. And we agree with the representations made here today and ask that you do approve those five-year extensions of both the gas and electric franchise.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Questions coming, Mr. Lawson?
So, Linda, tell us, for us, those of us who have friends and family in California, and obviously, this is a big deal right now is what's going on with the power shut-offs and turning off service to millions of people. Tell us how it's different for a state of Nevada and our particular, our franchise versus what's happening with California.
Love to tell you, but that's why I brought Chris and Chief Reagan. I think they can, and actually, Chief Reagan was just down in California last week on the ground in Auburn. So, I'll bring them both up.
I think this is more to put our people's mind at ease that we do things differently here in Nevada.
Absolutely. Just like a lot of other things, question three, et cetera. You dug into it and got good information.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith.
Just give us your name on the record.
Chris Hoffman, NV Energy, Grid Reliability. So, I think you posed a very good question. First and foremost, let me tell you guys that the City of Sparks is actually not located with any of our, inside any of our Tier Two or escalated Tier Three fire zones. We worked with UNR and DRI to identify all of those zones. So, first and foremost, that. Secondly, from an aspect of how PG&E made their decision, we're built to a higher snow load, higher wind load type environment. So, we're designed for that. Whereas, a lot of areas down in PG&E's service territory are not built to that design. So, with that in mind, there's multiple factors that actually come into play when we make a decision or a decision is made for a public safety outage management turnoff or something along those lines. Those being wind gusts, red flag days, temperature, relative humidity, as well as working with the National Weather Service, seeing what they're seeing, first, working with first responders, our chief as well, and making a decision from that aspect. So, it's not just a, hey, we see higher winds, we're going to cut power. It's not something along those lines. As well as, first, one of the biggest pieces in that, I'm sorry, is our energy release component, the ERC, which we go out and sample fuels on a weekly basis in our higher-risk areas to get an actual number. Does that answer your question in a really long engineering sort of way?
I think it's important to notice, to note the difference. And that was something that I didn't realize till I did a little bit of homework. But it's important to know that you just don't turn the power off because the weather forecaster, who's fifty percent wrong, has said there's going to be a high wind today.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Would you like to add anything, sir?
No, Chris covered it. We did send a team over to Auburn area to help mitigate the issues they were having over there. A team of us also took notes. So, if we ever did have to pull the trigger where we would have to de-energize, we have notes. So, we didn't have the issues that we're having over there.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Dare?
I have a question when it comes to some of the legislation that came through, talking about how we have to get to solar and some of the different areas. We have, we're talking 2026, our franchise goes to, right? Is that what we said? So, the next few years, the one thing that I just wondered, what kind of stuff do we anticipate? Because you won't be necessary in front of us to ask us for this for a little while. What kind of stuff do we anticipate in the next years to come when it comes to the percentage that the state's requiring that we are on our, we do a lot, we do a better job with solar, wind, or whatever the heck we're going to do? How does that fit into your, into your aspect for the next few years?
So, there's several things. We are working towards 100% renewable energy. And it's getting more cost-effective all the time with new technologies. So, we are working towards that. There is, I think we're over 30% now, and we continue to grow in the amount of renewable resources that are part of our portfolio. And always keeping in mind, keeping rates low for customers. And then, kind of short-term, there was another legislative initiative which brings on community solar, which allows in your jurisdiction, identification of areas where constituents may not otherwise have an opportunity to put solar on their apartment complex or have that ability. And we're just getting out with that program now. So, we'll work with, maybe it's your public works folks or whoever you want to have involved. If you have a sustainability manager, we'll work in identifying locations in Sparks so you can get some more local renewables.
No, that's good. It's been a joy to always work with you guys, obviously. We thank you for never turning off our energy so far. Don't do so. We like, we like that it stays on. No, but it's a joy to work with you guys and in the future. I just know, we do have a lot of, it's interesting. It seems like a lot is changing on this front. And you guys know it better than we do. And so, we just, it'd be great to continue to hear from you how that affects us, how it affects our, how we can get that word out and help get that word out to our citizens and everything. But it just seems I've been meeting a lot, and there's a lot of conversation about the change of how maybe things are going to happen in the future, so.
Yeah, they follow it closely and get out ahead of it. I know they've been, you know, years ago, started looking at things like grid hardening to protect the system. And we do appreciate the partnership with Sparks and appreciate going forward with that and supporting your community, whether it's events like the Mayor's Golf Tournament or...
Yay, this Friday.
Yes, and projects like the Veterans Memorial Plaza. We really like that opportunity to support you and constituents and businesses here.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Bill, come on down. Be careful now. Welcome, Bill.
My question to the...
Bill, give us your full name.
Oh, Bill Wagner. Anyway, my question to these folks here is, do they have any concerned areas that you're concerned about?
As in, with respect to the fire?
Yes.
Yeah, we absolutely do. We have some, sorry, we absolutely do. We have identified multiple Tier Three areas. That's more likely, that's more of our Lake Tahoe, east side of Lake Tahoe area, and some of our transmission in the California area.
So, you're going to be working on taking care of that?
We absolutely are. We're working in the process on grid hardening that, as Linda spoke to earlier. What that means is we're replacing steel, or our wood poles, with steel structures. We're also working to put in what we call tree wire. It's, for lack of a better term, an insulated wire. So, if a tree brushes up against it.
It won't ignite, then, right?
Correct.
Good deal. Thank you. Thank you, folks.
You're always good for a question or two, Bill. Appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the council for action. Looking for a motion? Mr. Dare?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the five-year extension of the Electrical System Franchise Agreement A3355. Sorry, A3355.
We're on 10-3 first.
I'm going to do the wrong one.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have, 10-3 first. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Right there in front of me. Almost. It's okay. I move to approve a five-year extension of the Natural Gas Franchise Agreement A3356 with Sierra Pacific Power Company DBA NV Energy Natural Gas.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion, look for a second, Mr. Abbott.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to 10.4, this is a public hearing, anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action, looking for a motion, Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve the five-year extension of the Electrical System Franchise Agreement A3355 with Sierra Pacific Power Company DBA NV Energy.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Anderson.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. It passes unanimously, thank you. You guys do a great job, we appreciate it, we appreciate working with you. Thanks, Linda. Okay, there is no planning or zoning public hearing or action items, so we'll move to comments, I'll open up the public comment. Is anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? This is the last public comment period. Seeing none, bring it back to the council, comments from the mayor, city council, and city manager. Mr. Lawson.
So, we have, we just redid our zoning and ordinances on where we put things in the City of Sparks in 2014, and very comprehensive update, obviously there's pockets where we missed those, so I'm requesting that the city manager bring back an item for the city council's consideration to potentially direct the city manager to review permitted uses, specifically internet-based retail and auto-oriented uses, as well as locational criteria for signage in the MU zoning district. And then, one more item, Mr. Manager, I'd like to see if there's a way, while we're applying for grants for the All Abilities Park, that we could move some money around and potentially get that thing started earlier than later, so that our citizens can enjoy the All Abilities Park sooner than a year and a half from now. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Dare.
I just want to make sure people are invited to the Nevada Veterans Memorial Dinner on November 7th, it's exciting to see, if you go over to the marina, you'll see the first wave, almost done, in about three weeks, you actually will, the fence will leave, and you can go enjoy that, and there'll be a video playing showing what the rest will look like, but our dinner's on November 7th at the Atlantis, and it's something for our whole state, and it's something very special for Sparks, so, awesome.
Absolutely, I concur. Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none without objection, we are adjourned, thank you.